I want to call to order the town of West Bath July planning board meeting. My name is Darlene Easterbrook, I'm chair. The gentleman on the board would introduce himself, please?
Jerry Williams, Jerry Mitchell, Jamie Wallace.
Alright, so we have called to order. We've established a forum, we require three board members, and we have four this evening. And then we have our first, uh, sorry, amendments to the agenda. Anyone have any amendments?
Nope.
We can do all. Alright, no amendments to the agenda. Our first applicant is H and C Garage LLC, a new business on thirty-two State Road.
Yes ma'am.
Who's here for that? Come on up to the front and present what you've got, talk to us about it.
Do we stand?
Nope, you can pull up chair, whatever you want to do.
Good evening.
Chris, state your name for the argument first.
Yep, Zach Sewell. Good evening, I'm chair, plenty of board members, I'm Zach Sewell. I'm here for approvals to operate the auto repair garage and a used car garage at thirty-two State Road. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have in the boardroom now.
Alright, so let's see. So this is a twenty, uh, twenty year old, so thirty-two State Road, which is... Oh, that's the plans.
Yes ma'am. It's a, uh, oh, it's on the end of those, uh, they're good.
So you're the owner of the property?
Yes ma'am, being my father actually.
Is there a deed inside of this package to show ownership?
Ah, shit.
I'm seeing, septic. You don't have one, I guess?
I didn't see one.
I'm not seeing one.
I don't have one. My father told me to give him a call if he had any questions, he wanted me to come tonight for...
Okay.
Getting an accident, nice house.
So we need proof of ownership? He's not around. Can't run over with it?
No, probably, probably not, no.
Okay.
Yeah, also has septic designs, he's...
You say he had an accident?
Yeah, he did yesterday morning, actually, yeah.
Was it good?
Yeah, it's good.
You okay?
He's okay, yeah, luckily. Dog's good, he asked me to go out with that, it's a spray label.
Alright, so Zach, it's yours and Mark's?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know what you would need for like proof of ownership, I would like...
A deed, common deed? Yeah, it's only a deed, you know?
That's easily obtained, though, we can, uh, check on it, so. That's, if, uh, registered, but he's like, you're the thing, you have your responsibility.
Okay.
Alright, lot zoning is business commercial. There's a garage there now. Jerry, you want to check to make sure it's a lot and not a...
Yep.
I guess, so you're doing... An auto repair garage? Kind of existing system, no? So auto repair and used car dealer?
Yes ma'am.
And then services focal. You've checked existing system, but then you're saying install a new system?
Yes ma'am.
So...
We have a new design that's...
Okay.
Getting done, uh, within three weeks.
So is the existing system not functioning properly?
They actually failed.
Failed?
When we, when we purchased it.
Are you guys doing business out of there now?
No.
Did you get a chance, Jerry, to look at the septic?
Yep, I, so I, so I did that.
Oh, this is yours?
Yeah, full disclosure.
Oh, I'm sorry, there you are.
So I did it for the previous owner before these guys bought it, and then, uh, when they, when they bought it.
You just changed the name?
Yeah.
Okay, so the septic is good? And that's not a conflict of interest because you did it for the previous owner, just for the record?
And I can, I can...
Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's hard to not have profit holders. Alright, percentage of lot to be occupied, there are two structures, you've got fifteen percent. I was looking at this, and I'm a little confused with your description of where the lot is, because you wrote on here that it's like three different lots.
Yes.
Right, but it's eleven, eleven A, and eleven B?
No, it's gonna be eleven, eleven B, and eleven C.
Eleven C?
Right.
Okay, so... Are you joining all three of those properties together?
We're joining eleven, eleven B, and eleven C together to make two or half acres, to make it meet requirements for commercial. There's one more part I told you.
So, is there anything on eleven C right now?
There is, there's a trailer on there that we're fixing up.
Okay, so it's a trailer you're fixing?
Yep.
And keeping?
We're, we're selling.
You're selling the trailer?
Yes.
Like driving it off the lot?
Nope, it's gonna be sold on the lot with one acre. With eleven, with eleven A is...
And that, that would be this trailer here?
Right, the other two trailers are going.
Okay, so you said that you're putting eleven, eleven B, and eleven C together?
Together for the garage.
Okay, so I don't, we don't care about eleven A then?
Okay.
So is there anything on eleven C?
No.
There's nothing on eleven C. Is there anything on eleven B?
Trailer.
Eleven B has a trailer?
Yep.
And what are you gonna be doing with that trailer?
Get rid of it.
You're removing it?
Yep, removing it, like, not selling it, just tearing it down.
Okay, and then eleven has the main building?
Yep.
And then there's a mobile home next to it that says to be removed?
I thi- I think that's all eleven C, actually, if I'm not mistaken, it's all eleven C.
Not according to this map, eleven C is way down here, the road's out here. This is why I'm confused.
So eleven, so eleven B has the trailer... So eleven B has a trailer on it? Right behind it?
Yep. Okay.
Okay, we're getting rid of both trailers.
If you don't mind, we'll back to that.
Yeah, look at this map for a second, so this is the road.
Yep, this is that one trailer that's there right here.
You've got a garage.
Yep, this, this trailer's going.
But what lot is this trailer on?
I think that's eleven A.
Eleven A is behind.
Right.
At the hundred eighty-two feet, eleven A is back there.
See, this is kind of where we all, this is where we were kind of mixed up when we were buying the place, because this is what took us so long to buy it, because all these trailers were like together on all these lots.
Right.
Yeah, there was a trailer that was touching two.
Yeah, there's, there's, they're touching like two adjacent points on this...
Is that this one?
I think it's both of them, if I'm not mistaken, right, I think it's this one, and there's another one right here, and the one I'm selling is right down here. Okay, so there's three trailers out back there, and this one here is like in the middle of eleven B and A.
Well, according to how it's plotted on the plan, it's, it's on eleven.
Right, it's not drawn correctly then, yeah.
There's eleven A is in the back.
You see our confusion?
Yes, I know, I mean, I could, I could...
And then you said there's another trailer over here on this lot, but you haven't drawn it. So, I struggled to, I don't know if anyone else struggled with this, but I struggled to figure out what was really going on here with what you had and what you, you're getting rid of and what you were keeping, and...
Okay.
So, and I'll go back to the whole point of, you only have to have one acre for a commercial property.
Okay.
And if this lot is under an acre now, and it's grandfathered, then you can use it, it's just a non-conforming lot. You don't have to add acreage to it, that's where I'm going with this.
Okay.
But it has to be really clear on these plans what you're doing with these buildings and where they are. So if that one right there is on the line, then this is drawn incorrectly.
See, I'm not, I mean, I can, I can call him if you wanna, he knows more about it than I do, really, I'm not really familiar. He's the one who does that.
Right, and I, and I understand that, you know, he got an accident yesterday, and that's...
Yeah, I mean, I can call him, he's right there, just answer your questions if you want, but I'm just not. I just know that that one is, it's either eleven B or eleven A, I mean, it's, they're right side by side, so I think, I'm not really sure, so...
Okay, but eleven A is off this page, and so is eleven B, as far as...
Well, by this map right here, it looks like this is eleven A goes all the way up here.
Let me see your map, let's see, here. See, this is, see, this is your square, your road is here.
Yep.
Your road is there.
Right.
There's your eleven. This is a hundred eighty-two feet, that's a hundred eighty-two feet. So eleven A is...
Okay, so that's all eleven A then, I guess, but, well, I was just getting confused with the garage right here next to...
So maybe this one is on eleven?
That's, I think it's on, I think it's on eleven A and eleven B, though, actually, it's because it's...
Well, if the task map is close, then that mobile home is all on eleven, from what you've shown on the plan.
Yep. I mean, it's, it's been messed up like the whole time that we were trying to buy this.
So...
So pretty much we're trying just to have this one lot and combine these two, or three, I should say, eleven, eleven B, eleven C, and just have this one just be sold with it gone, so I can just have...
Okay, so maybe it's because you're putting more than one business in that garage?
No, just one.
Okay, so let me just stop and start over, so in the garage, you're doing what now?
Just repair and auto garage.
One business?
Yep, one business, yep.
Okay, so technically... You only need one acre to do that here.
Okay.
And since that building is, I'm assuming from this layout, within the confines of that one lot, it's under the one acre, I believe, right? Point five nine? I think you put in a point six nine, correct? Although we don't have a deed, and it doesn't say on here, can I, did you verify at all if eleven was point five nine?
Yeah, the garage itself, where it sits now, is on less than an acre.
Okay.
So, so that's why we wanted to do it.
And then Mark wanted to make this into this lot right here, so he would have enough acreage to put another business in this building if he wanted to.
Okay, so then that's a different story then?
Right.
If he wants to put, so, alright, so as it is right now, that garage will by itself, with no other trailers on that lot?
Yep.
It can stay the way it is, at point six nine acres?
Okay.
Because it's not conforming, it physically is there. If you want to have a trailer on the lot with it, you need an acre and a half. Because with the commercial, right, with the commercial, it's one acre for the first business, and then a half an acre for everyone after that.
So I think that's what he wanted to do, because I, he wants, I think it has to be an acre and a half to sell that trailer, correct? Or just an acre?
No, it's, it's what it is, you just sell the lot with the trailer on it.
Okay.
As long as the trailer is physically on the lot.
Yep.
I mean, if, if it's, if it's really...
It, that one is...
Sitting in between two lots, then you've got to do something, so the trailer's in the lot.
That, that one's on eleven A, I know for a fact, the one that's there now.
Okay, so that's another problem that you might have, it's not within the lot.
Yeah, that, that one is, yes, I know, it's...
So I don't know if that changes what he wants to do, I don't know if he knew that, but, I hope you guys are...
I, I don't know.
We, we were just gonna use this extra stuff just for like parking, for myself, or for our boat, or anything like that, out back.
If it's a business, then it needs to have its own half acre. Your own personal stuff, that's your personal stuff, and you own the lot.
Okay.
But if you're gonna leave a trailer out back, so if you've got three lots, and you've got one garage, and two trailers, leave it the way it is? Because, I guess I just wasn't sure why you were mixing them all together.
That's what he, like, he wrote right here to me that he wanted to join these eleven A, B, and C, there was a paper right here that said, uh, I think, he said that you guys all got two, that would be...
What do you said, though, is that, there's not gonna be, if I'm correct, there's not gonna be any mobile homes on eleven B or C?
Nothing.
And there's not gonna be a mobile home on eleven? That you said to be removed, right?
Right.
So he's not, he's not gonna have any volume of it on... On eleven, on eleven C?
I could just call him real quick if you don't mind.
Right, I mean, it's, it's just a lot of...
It's a lot.
Costs and survey and all that kind of stuff to merge them together, I would just, I didn't want them to think that they couldn't leave the garage as it is.
The point is, Mark, he wanted to do it that way, and this is how he wanted to do it. He wanted to, there was enough acreage there to keep a nice piece for this garage, and an extra one acre with a mobile home that he can sell. That was his whole plan, just to straighten out that chalked up piece of...
Mess.
Right.
Yeah.
But what Zach is saying is that eleven A is the one with the mobile home, which...
This, I think there's like two, like, if, if I remember right, I may be wrong, but if I remember right, I think eleven, there's two trailers on eleven A and, like, so on eleven A, there's that one trailer that's way out back, that we're selling. And if I remember right, eleven A and B, I mean, we measured it out, so it might still be on there, it might not be. If we measure it out like that, then it's not on there, but that one that's on, that one that's right next to the garage, that's gonna be gone. I think that one's adjacent to eleven A, or very close to the line on eleven A. You see what I'm saying? What's up, it's gonna be gone. Because that one goes past the garage.
Yeah, this is kind of...
They're gonna have to determine...
Yeah.
Where the trailers are.
I think, we, we measured it to see, so, does this tell you, like, is this big box right here eleven, is, so this one from right, is it eleven B?
No, that's eleven. Because your road is right here.
Okay, so this is just eleven, so this trailer is on eleven. This one that we're removing. So this whole box right here is eleven, correct?
I don't know, you guys drew it.
So it's gonna be, so this, this means this trailer is on eleven?
This looks like it's eleven, yes.
Okay.
From the task map you gave us, and that plan, if it does match up, that that would be this lot.
So there's, there's just that one trailer on eleven A then. So eleven B, or eleven has the garage and that trailer on it.
Okay.
So that one's gonna be removed.
Didn't you say there was another trailer?
There is, back here further. On eleven, I think that's eleven B, the trailer's on.
Okay. So I guess it goes back to what you're really trying to do. If you're really trying to join all the lots...
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do.
And then consider the entire thing with that garage on it, then you need some sort of deed and some sort of plan showing all those lots joined together.
Okay.
And that you're just gonna have the garage, and that where all those other trailers are, that they're gonna all be removed. So there's like not enough plan here, right? I mean, it's not a full picture?
So maybe there was enough picture there, the garage and that existing building where it's allowed. My suggestion was to not do all this and draw it the way it is now to get the business in there.
Yep.
This is just extra stuff that is going to be done, doesn't necessarily need to be done for what you're here for tonight.
Okay.
But as far as I'm concerned, you can put a business in this garage.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with all of the things that you're saying, it's just the plan to join it all together doesn't match with what we're being shown.
Wish we could do that another time, correct, or, no?
Yeah.
Yep.
As it stands right now, the garage, after removing the mobile home, because that would be a second one, can be here.
Okay.
What you do with the rest of the property later, the only thing you cannot ever do is make that lot smaller.
Right.
Because it's too small as it is.
Yep.
So you can't take a piece out of it, you can't do any of that. And you only have one business in there.
Okay, absolutely, yeah.
Because it's under an acre.
Yep.
So... Right, did I miss anything?
I think no, I think that's...
Missed?
And I like John's approach too, Jonathan's approach, that, you know, this is...
Right.
With the garage, this is the lot, and so that they can keep moving ahead, and then you decide, we're gonna do with eleven B and eleven C. Once you decide, it's gonna be with eleven B and eleven C, and, you know, we can, we can approve that. If that's gonna be part of this business, because he would need approval to add those lots to this business, correct, John, or not? How'd that work?
Yeah.
If you...
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you wanted to change the, you know, the deed description and add acreage to this lot, after, down the road, you mean?
Or make it part of this business?
No, no, you can't have any more than one business on this lot in order to have...
No, that's what I'm talking about, there's only one business.
Yeah, just one business, there's not gonna be another business here.
Then I guess I don't understand your question.
Well, does he have to, can he use eleven B and C as part of his business on eleven without coming back to us?
That's my question too, actually.
What do you mean, use it as part of the business?
Well, he talked about packing cars up here or something, so this would be part of the business on eleven. Would he have to come back to us for any approvals to use eleven B and C for his business on eleven? I can't think of a reason why he would.
I wouldn't think so, it's if you want to add a second business, you need more acreage.
But you're not talking about having a second business? Your business is gonna be auto repair and selling used cars?
Yes.
If he adds the acreage with no business, that he's just changing the deed description, making the law bigger.
Right.
But if he adds acreage and wants another business, then he has to come here.
Right, right. So that's where I was confused, that, like, I wanted to, like, so I told my father, I want to join these two together with eleven, so I just have more acres just to have to park, things, or like even with stone removal, to be able to pull cars in there to remove stone?
You don't have to.
Okay.
In order to have a second business on eleven, you do have to.
Right, so there's not gonna be a second business, so that's just out of the...
And the mobile home has to go.
Right, that's gone, both of them.
If you wanted the mobile home to stay, then you would want to add the acreage, so you had an acre and a half.
Okay.
And then the mobile home could stay.
Okay.
It's, it's a...
Yep, I see what you're saying, yep.
It's one acre for commercial, one and a half for one business, one and a half acres for two businesses, but you're at point six nine on the existing lot with one business, so you're okay.
Okay.
And then with the other back lots, right, like eleven, eleven B?
Right.
And C, and you own D too?
No, D's, D's, that's where, that all of that stuff is, that they sold back to C and P like years ago, I started even...
But he could put a business on eleven, eleven C and eleven B if he wanted to.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because they're separate.
But, but the problem, the problem, like, if you combine them all, then...
Then I wouldn't be able to do that.
Right.
Correct, so I'm better off just to leave it the way it is.
You still could, but it would have to still meet the acreage requirement.
Okay.
Can I reansure?
That's what I said, yes. The one acre that it needs.
It would need a half acre.
Half acre, for each business?
If you join them all together, yes.
Sure.
You join, so if you, so the first, so if you had, if you joined the entire thing into one big lot, the first business takes up one acre of that, three acres.
Okay.
The second one is a half an acre, so you could, with three acres right there, you could have five businesses.
Oh, okay.
On one lot.
Yeah.
It's, it's that sort of thing.
Okay.
And I remember back, um, when they came to us before with the garage, and you put like ten different rooms upstairs, and it's gonna fill it with ten different businesses, we'd have eleven. I'm like, yeah, that won't work, you gotta join the other ones, and then you can only have so many.
So that's what that was for up there?
Yeah, yeah, I remember that, and he was really mad.
That was very nice up there, actually.
He built it, and he didn't realize, and we had to tell him no, it was not a good day.
Yeah, I'm sure, it wasn't a good, that place is very nice up there, actually.
Yeah, we don't, we don't write through it, it's a new one.
Did you have, you had a lot of different businesses?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was nine different offices up there.
Well, upstairs, it was nine or ten different rooms? Like, I think there was a hallway, and then different, like, office spaces off to the side, and so it's gonna make, I think there were ten of them, so it's gonna make eleven businesses on the lot. And he didn't want to add the rec, well, and it added all of us from back into it, it still wouldn't have been enough to build eleven. Yeah, yeah, it's not good. Does that help you with what you need to know?
Mark is aware, Mark is aware that it's an acre for one and a half, right, I've gone over all this.
Yes.
This is how he wanted it.
Yep, that's how he wanted it, so...
Okay, so we're no longer adding the lots in?
No, we'll just leave it the way it is.
The way it is, right?
Yep, I like that, I'm fine with that.
And you're removing the mobile home?
Removing the mobile home, yep, two of them.
There's only one showing on this page?
That's right, sorry, sorry, sorry. This one, yes, yes.
So you're removing the lot?
Yep.
And they get parking out front like it has been?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. So, this all came from the fifteen percent, so this building is fifteen percent of this lot? Yes, okay. You siding windows, garage doors, and then you're gonna pave out the front? And this is one sixty-five. So, we're gonna cross out this two point five acre C letter. Catch, yeah? And then, mobile home at Seven Judy's Drive, lot eleven, currently removed. Mobile home, I don't think you want this in here either. I'm just gonna run here, no longer joining lots.
That's fine, that's fine.
I can't think of anything else. I just got really confused when I was trying to look through this, like, why?
Yeah, I'm not...
Would you?
Do you need permission?
I don't know, so where is the septic going?
Right, pretty much right in front of this trailer, like, right where that trailer is gonna be removed, right there.
Oh, I see, so septic field there. You happy with that?
Yep.
And then we've got the pump station, you're reusing the pump station, replacing it, reusing it? Okay, you've got dumpster in the back. The lights, you've got A and B on the front, so I'm on the left, both front and back.
Yeah, two on the front, both on the back.
The concrete pad that's shown here on the plan, is that there already?
Yep.
Okay. You've got where you park them, put on any poles, there's a wellhouse in the back. Everything's off property line as far as it needs to be. What else do we have in here? All the white specs. They are... Hundred and eighty degree. Those are mounted on the building, right?
Correct.
Right, your backyard business like a stadium, so the lights aren't supposed to leave the property line? But it's your property out back too, right?
All the same.
Light can't leave the property lines. Will it, will they extend over the property lines, the lights?
I think they will.
He's got it going to the back and to the front.
Yep, one to the back, paving towards like, towards the wellhouse.
And it's central main power, it's not like it's a residence, it's a letter, to the right?
Yes.
And then plants, it's not a residence, it's, it's more to keep you from shining your lights on your neighbor's house and keeping them up, it's really the thing. It's a small like that. What else? Dumpster's parking, can you guys think of anything else that we're usually concerned with?
No. It was already an auto repair facility anyway, so it's just going back. Looks a lot better, you drive out for sure.
Right? And I think, um... So you, you know that they've purchased it, right?
Yes.
Mark's put in here, I mean, it's just a little gray without having enough proof of ownership, but...
I can privately email you the deed right now.
Well, no, I was gonna say, since code enforcement is, has vetted that, I think we can probably move forward with that as a... A condition that has to come in, gotta have a deed come in. And it's almost a little gray that Mark has signed it, and you're representing him without a letter, that you can represent him. But... John?
I talked to him, he wrote that, they both own it together, it's named after his kids.
Oh, I understand, without a deed, I mean, okay, alright, so I'm okay with making that a condition, it...
I think it's why they want a deed anyway.
I'm sure.
I think it's why they want a deed anyway.
I'm sure, probably, yes.
Yeah, we're just crossing our, just dotting our i's, you know? And I get it, he's indisposed today, and that's totally understandable too, so... Do you gentlemen have any other questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions about the application? Concerned?
I guess my only question is why you provide all the lots? Just because you want, they want to, no, nothing to do with like approval, like, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just curious.
We're buying the lots, you mean?
Yeah, why provide all the lots?
I'm not sure what, like, he, the reason why I want to do that is just, like I said, for like storage, or to build another, just like a lean-to or something to store cars, or engines, or anything like that, or even like... Cars or engines or anything like that, or even like cars that you don't want in the weather or whatever, you know?
Right, and maybe it was just a thing that he didn't, Mark didn't understand the whole acreage or.
May, maybe, cause he's.
Or maybe just that, we explain it to him now.
I would think. We've had a lot of times sat down with him and he understands it clearly. He wanted to make a little money back by selling one with a mobile home on it and keep a big enough one that they can do what they want tomorrow.
Makes sense.
That's why he wants to do it.
Yeah, so.
And I think it's just, there's no difference with combining them or not, really, correct?
Right, and you can combine them later.
Right.
But if you're saying that you're gonna combine them now, we can't prove this, because this is not representing that.
That's fine, that's fine, maybe.
So, are you combining them now or later?
Later, if, if, if even, if even later.
Maybe later.
Maybe later, yes, maybe later.
Alright, so as it is, lot eleven, with the garage, without the mobile home on it. Is what he's decided to do, and I've modified this and taken that extra acreage and spot.
Okay.
And this will be your original, okay?
So, I'll make a motion then that we approve. This new business on this lot is twenty maybe two by twenty sixty-five foot in law. With the condition the mobile home's gonna be removed.
Mm-hmm.
And that he'll provide us a deed with his name.
Proof of ownership.
Proof of ownership.
Do you need proof of ownership?
Yep.
Okay, I like that motion.
Certainly.
Did you get that, Carly?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Alright, all is in favor. Have you, yes.
Thank you very much.
I'll have to fill out a form and give you a copy and then.
So it looks really nice.
Good to go.
He's done a very good, I'm, I'm just the one that, you know, works all the cars, he does all the.
Is that, oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, while he's.
I'm not good with, with the worst, I've placed it on, he does, I mean, I've placed it pretty.
And then I did this.
Yeah, it was.
I don't know where I was at.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it all looked a lot better than it was completely done, you know, it's all paved and. Don't say it, it'll all hang out the side, you know?
And, yeah.
Yeah, that wheat is very big. Let me just check this out, we get that piece.
John, this is the kind of. He can just stop that by himself.
You know, that's all.
Phil. I have the mobile home on right here.
And that's gonna be the final one, and these, you can have this back for a little time.
This one's gonna be the record and then you can do everything for the others. Alright, you just fill this out, you have it.
Don't leave that there.
That's, that can go with that.
Alright, Dan.
So. My coffee, very cool.
I think they're checked for you, Joe.
Nice.
The man.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's really cool.
You can, you can, you can say that later, say. Sure.
Nothing.
I'm starting on that.
I think that's really gonna be a game changer for traffic on state road, because now, before they had this loadout to pull in and.
Oh, yeah.
Traffic would build up and there'd be some hogging, so.
That's pretty good, yeah.
That's a big issue.
Who's gonna pay that, is that?
Uh, we're not sure yet either, uh, I think I'm just gonna go with three dollars, cause it's just, you know. Keep the neighborhood.
Yep, that's cool.
They're all pretty close in price, so I think I'm just gonna go with three dollars, I'm pretty sure.
Alright, so you got your conditions in here, trailer's removed and proof of ownership provided to CEO. In how long, John? A week? Two weeks?
Um, for a while, for the trailer to be removed?
Uh, proof of ownership of the deed.
Okay, oh, a couple days, week, yes, one.
We'll just, we'll add that with the same conditions of your, my final inspection for the fire.
Okay.
We'll do that at the same time.
Yep.
Alright. Okay, oh, here, this is all for you too. I just need to run along with it. Alright. Okay, so, public information, do you guys have something you want to come and ask us to talk about?
We do.
So let me help you with.
Karen, Karen, you know what, Nelson, the one twenty-nine Sabine Road? What would be your name?
Kathy, we're playing with the twenty-seven Sabine. So, we have recently learned that the Hall property on Dan Cove, twenty-eight acres, went up for sale for four point two five million dollars. The Hall property? Dan Cove Lodge?
Okay.
And David Hall's old place.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is up on the market for four point two five million and being marketed.
Okay.
Widely, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
We physically above the property, that is further down than the start of the road from where we are. So we have some concerns about what's allowed in that rural residential neighborhood.
Okay.
Um, one of our main concerns is the language that's in the ordinances, doesn't seem clear about whether campgrounds are allowed or not.
Okay, so help me with exactly what it is. Do you, like, share our thoughts?
Should we, yeah, we can't forget more.
Oh, is that where you go down? Okay. And it's like a.
Guys.
It's just.
John, you're loud, sorry.
I'm sorry.
This is the, I don't know, Dan Cove property is this property right here, so it's a residential.
So your rural residential?
Yep.
Out there?
Part of the property, obviously, it's right there.
No, it's, Dan Cove is, this is right in here?
It's, I forgot, I lost it, this one. No, it's not, it's not. Where was I just at?
I think this is all Dan, Dan Cove, I hear. This is where they will land.
See, see, see.
Uh, is that right?
Yes.
Just a second please. Okay, um, this was plenty over here?
It's this one.
Okay, these are lots here.
This is the short.
Okay, there we go, okay. This is divided in Dan Cove Road here, this is a private road which you then, there's people that live up to here and over in here and over here. Uh, our property is right here, and we're three hundred feet, we bought it on Dan Cove. There was a big field, roughly maybe two acres, that's right in here. And we're concerned that that could possibly be a campground and we are right there.
Alright. Or what would be allowed, you know, we see, um, wind things in here, solar things, you know, recreational things, so we're gonna get some kind of idea of what might be allowed.
So it's a rural residential area?
Mm-hmm.
So, do you guys have an ordinance book?
I did it online and I've.
Okay.
Said it's with me.
So anything that is under RR is allowed up there?
Mm-hmm. So where we're confused is, I don't see the word campground used except in the shoreline district. There's a part for that.
There isn't.
But in rural residential, the closest we came was private, uh, wait a minute. It was a recreational. Public and private recreation areas involving minimal structural development.
Where are you looking at?
I'm on page twenty-three of your ordinances.
Oh, okay, so you're in the, in the uses.
So there's already a lodge on the property and it hasn't been used for a number of years. This is seventeen seventy-five house. That's not on the national historic register, so there's no requirements to keep that standing if somebody were to purchase it.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the land is in tree growth, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's been in tree growth in the state of Maine for a number of years.
Right.
So, um, that language, public and private recreation areas involving minimal structural development. Doesn't say campground in it, but is campground considered one of those uses? Cause I don't see anywhere in the ordinances where it is or it isn't allowed, other than the shoreline zone.
Public and private, oh, sorry.
So, well, you're on page twenty-three.
Yep.
And which number are you looking at?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Public and private recreation areas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's not specific. I know that somewhere near this is campgrounds, I'm just trying to remember where it is.
The only place I found campground was on page fifty-one in the shoreline Obley Zone. Not saying it's not in there somewhere else, but that's the only place I found it.
There.
But these are individual private campsites, not associated with campgrounds. If you look at that, I have a U, individual private campsites.
I'm looking above that, campgrounds in the shoreline zone.
Okay, there we go, T.
So, your lot is which one now, the one right next to it?
Right about it.
We're about it, three hundred feet.
So, the shoreline zone is the pink that you're looking at?
Right, that's pink.
So, campgrounds and shoreline zone wouldn't be anywhere near your property line?
Right, but the problem is, there's an open field, you know, at least two or more acres, that. Where, right from the road right down to a further pen, is three hundred feet. And we're on two acre of one and we're in the middle of that.
Right.
But in between us, there's only just, well, Jerry, you know, you know what the situation is. There's only a little bit of trees and some brush and bushes, and then there's an open field right there that's about two, at least two acres. That's all of this area here, there's a possibility somebody could put a campground right there.
So we're asking, is there anywhere in your ordinances that say a campground can or cannot be allowed in a rural residential area?
The, so, overall the ordinance, if it does not have the use in here, it's not allowed.
Okay.
But some of these are vague enough.
Like, public and private recreation areas?
Right.
Is very vague.
Right. Oh, right above it, individual private campsite, but that's an individual private campsite.
Right.
That's not a campground.
Right. So we have that law order on our side of the property, on the opposite side of the property, on opposite Dan Cove, is a series of houses going down the road over there, so it's a very residential area.
Right.
And also directly across the built-in field would be, where the road is right down to, this is Dan Cove Road. There's one person that lives right there on the other side of the house, or on the other side of the road, so they'd be looking at all that open field.
Mm-hmm.
But I consider that maybe we wouldn't want it to end up like minimal campground. Cause not only with the noise, but the confusion with the traffic and everything else that goes on.
Is there rumor that there's gonna be a campground going in?
There's no rumor, we're, we're trying to be proactive, because we were told that it would go on the market, that was a surprise. We knew it was gonna eventually, but that was a surprise. They're marketing it as a, as a, um, family compound type thing, only, only trying to impress people that that would be nice. But there's nothing there that prevents anybody from buying it and developing it into something.
True.
So we don't wanna have them buy the property, come to you to say there's a campground, and we could've come here and said, can you tell us whether there's a campground allowed there or not?
Right now, they're not even putting any signs up to the public side, they're sleeping up the sale. They're doing it online, hoping they're gonna reveal it, somebody that's gonna pay them the four million dollars, and we're afraid it might get developed. Not somebody that wants to keep the place.
How many, how many acres are there?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
That's big.
With an existing large, large building already on the property.
Very good chance that somebody wants to send a buyer in anyway.
True. So I think the only thing on here that might even be close to a campground would be a public and private recreation area. But recreation area to me, eighteen on page twenty-three, recreation area to me means soccer fields.
Recreation to me means anything, you know, tennis court, baseball, baseball field, you know, ATV trails, you know?
Yeah, not necessarily campground, and I, I don't, I'm not funding if this is campground, I hope you guys.
No, me too.
Not.
A lot of things located on the property, up around the back is all woods and stuff, and over the other side goes into a tributary of the meadows.
Mm-hmm.
But it's not, it's not, it's tidal, but when tides are, it's all that.
Mm-hmm.
But somebody could, if they developed all that, have campsites also there for tents. And have people kayak if they wanted to do all that, so there's another big thing that could go on.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
A lot of people could be down there in that one area, more than what I'm sure the neighborhood would want to see.
True.
And that's a private road to begin with. It's a dirt road, and the private road, and that'd be on board traffic on that road up there.
Mm-hmm.
That's another, that's another question, it is a private road, it's not a town road.
Right.
So I'm assuming, if they didn't want that, they would have to notify all the neighbors who are on the road to get permission to use it or something like that?
Is it, does it have covenants, do you guys have with the road association?
We're not on it.
We're not on it?
We don't know. We just know the neighbors all work together to take care of it, we don't have, there's something wrong.
It would depend on how they have their stuff set up.
It's kind of a legal question.
Yeah, and that's not us, and I mean, you can't. Your neighbors can't tell you what you can do on your property any more than you don't. Your neighbors can tell you what to do on your property, if I buy it, it's yours, and as long as it's allowed in the ordinance, then you can do it. It's, it's just a gray area with what you consider public and private recreation areas.
So is there an opportunity to get a clarification on what that phrase means? Or to write it so that it's clearer?
So, that would be a question for our legal counsel, and we'd have to get permission to actually discuss that with them. And changing it to make it more strict or anything like that would, would require, changing the ordinance, which requires a town meeting to vote it in. Which can happen, it's just a process, takes time. And it's been done. Christine, what do you think?
We could reach out to Sal and see what she, her interpretation, I think I would start there. With the interpretation of public and private recreation.
Yeah, there might be a state, um, it might be a state definition, there's nothing in the back of our definitions, is there?
I didn't see anything, no.
Yeah, so you've looked, okay. Well, we don't have a definition in the back of our book, we refer to the state definitions, but I'm not even sure that they're gonna have one for that.
But we can't really, we can't make any ruling with our proposal before us.
No, we're, when our legal ruling, we're simply putting this on the floor to say this is not clear enough and, and, um. You know, just try and get some discussion going before we see what happens.
Why do you think, why, why, why do you guys think it'd be a campground, just cause it would be a spot for one?
Right.
Why do you think someone would pay four point five million to put a campground?
We don't think they'd pay four point five million, four, four point two five million for it to begin with, but. Developers will come into all kinds of areas and do things, so who knows? Hopefully it'll be a family who wants to use the lodge as a bunkhouse, but we don't know what's gonna happen, so, you know, we're trying to be proactive and not get shocked later.
Let's see, recreation.
But I think that's a good approach, is to consult our legal, uh, person.
Yeah.
And ask them, well, two questions really, with the interpretation of that language, and secondly. We, we don't see anything that is said on the lodge or can't say, but.
There's nothing that says campground.
Yeah.
So you would say it's not allowed, but this is very big, public and private recreation area.
Correct, yeah.
So, so minimum structural development, do we consider roadways structural? I think we do. Trying to see, it's not really giving it to me here, what are we doing? Recreational use statute. That's not giving me a definition, which is what I asked for.
Boy, this is happening all over, isn't it, huh? Four and one.
Wow. We're all billionaires.
That's just it.
That is, oh, Michael.
That's what I was wanting to be proactive to, that's just it. How many people are gonna float in and put that kind of money down and leave the neighborhood the way it is, versus somebody that's gonna come in as a big developer and seeing all kinds of opportunities they could work with?
I know, like John said, it'd probably be more. I don't think John said it, he probably more likely to get carved out, break into subdivision. You know?
Yep.
Is that, is that three acres?
It's a lot of money, but really, it matters. It's a campground.
So, the main, the main recreational use statute says, it's just a quote in here, including but not limited to hunting, fishing, trapping, camping, environmental, education, research, hiking, recreational, caving, sightseeing, operating snow, traveling and altering vehicles, cleaning, hand lighting, dog setting, all that kind of stuff. That's inside of... The recreational use statute, so it's, I don't know if it's the definition. It's kind of tough, just on the phone, but I mean, we can ask legal, um, another thing you could do, because without it being an application, it really elevates up to the select board. If we wanna propose any sort of change to an ordinance to make it more strict or less strict or, or whatever, it has to go through them, and they have to allow us to do that in the first place.
Uh-huh.
So, you may wanna get yourself on a select board meeting, uh, agenda, to talk to them about it also. Because we can't really do anything with it without their okay.
Uh-huh.
Um, and they would probably like to have that announced that that has been put out there and that you're concerned.
I've already talked to Suzanne, she suggested we come here first and just have some general questions.
Right, yep.
Get it started.
Yeah, so I think that that would be the only, the only one. Because the only, the campsite talks about individual private ones.
It would be good for the ordinance to be real specific.
I agree with you, we've had our hands tied for three years, so...
It'd be nice if it was real specific, yes or no.
Yeah.
Allowed or not.
Yes.
We could actually list it and then just say, you know, we're in black, it's not the better.
See, Sabino had a campground for a number of years when the El Ros was open, but that was sent down into one area at the end where there was no residential, you know, issues of any kind.
And it was probably started before the ordinances were written?
Absolutely.
Which is a difference still, so...
So, that's why when we heard about it going after sale, and we started looking through the ordinances, and it was so vague, we thought we were gonna have some discussion at least.
Yeah, so I mean, they can put a country club, a golf course, swimming pool, tennis courts.
Yeah, shelters, settling, obviously, all sorts of things down there.
All kinds, all kinds of stuff.
Wind farm, solar farm, if I'm reading it right.
I don't know, Jerry, you know, do you wanna go to the next part like that?
You can always buy it.
You can always buy it, and that stops them from doing what they're doing.
We were trying to pass to buy the front property, but they didn't wanna break it up. We don't need twenty-eight acres.
Yeah.
So, what's the total acreage of the property?
Twenty-eight.
A lot of it's, um, a lot of it's trees, and a lot of it's ledge, but there's a good path. Like I said, there's like three or four acres of field, then you got the, there's like a big pond, then there's the lodge.
Where the house sits, this land, it could be developed into things, that could take that down.
Jonathan, that's a, that's a rural residential, that's three acres.
Right.
Right, for, for a lot.
Yeah.
So, plus, you gotta take roads out of that and so forth, so, you know, if somebody was to subdivide, the limit is to, you know, what they can...
We think we have some protection if they subdivide, because the acreage that's out front, that's, that abuts us. I don't think we'd support two houses and two subject systems because of the ledge and the clay and the pond that's there, that they'd have to be seventy-five feet from and everything, so probably only one house could go there, and, you know, no problem. Putting a bunch of campers and things in there with all the noise that goes with it and stuff, because quickly it becomes a problem.
I don't know if having a lot more specific.
I agree. Uh, yep. Does that help answer your...
It's not gonna be the one with thousands, yeah, but I'm glad that, agree that it's not, you know, described enough.
We do not have any better answers for you. That's all we have.
Okay.
Um, Christine, you've heard everything, you wanna reach out to Sally and ask her?
Yeah.
About that?
I think it's a pretty simple question.
So, it's, it's B eighteen underneath uses?
Yeah.
Public and private recreation areas involving minimum structural development?
Yeah, I have a note.
Okay, I didn't know you had the reference. So, did you have any other concerns about that?
Okay. So, I appreciate your time, at least we're talking about it.
Yeah, absolutely, and again, I reached out to the selectmen, and it sounds like Chris, and we touched Christine, so I'm sure she's gonna follow up with legal counsel.
Yeah, it's just late to hear back from the town attorney, and then if you wanna speak with the select board, that would be the time.
Just talk, and you have them, and then we'll see from there.
Yeah. And then you update.
All right, thank you. Yeah, okay.
And if anything does happen, you'll be notified, there's a letter, so...
That doesn't give me the moment, but...
No, I understand. I totally understand. Mm-hmm, I get it.
Okay, we appreciate your time.
We're somewhat limited as to what we can do about things like that.
Yeah.
So...
Okay, we're just laying it out there, that's the whole point of town tonight, just, you know...
Gotcha.
Check the agendas for the planning board too, I mean, if you, if somebody does wanna do something there, they'll come into the planning board.
I watch them all.
And talk to us, talk to us, so, and they're posted online, yeah.
Yeah, I watch them all.
Yeah, there are also notifications.
Oh, yes.
Okay, well, that's up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Christine, may I ask you a question? Is there a, in August, are we planning on a special town meeting? September, maybe, yeah?
I think September is more of a likelihood than August.
Okay, so, if we were to make, if, if the town did decide they wanted to make a change to the ordinance, then it could possibly be an article on that warrant in September?
Yeah, possibly, we can address the timing when it gets to that.
Yeah, yeah, right. But to give them a sense of...
Yeah.
What has to happen, so, thank you, yeah.
That's good.
All right, great. Okay, thank you all.
See you every night, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I know it's a lot of money. Christine, do you have anything you wanted to?
No, I was just staying late working, so I thought I'd hang out in a minute.
All right, um, then that's the end of the public information and comments. Next, um, I know Carly put election boxes on here, Gabe not being here, we all decided unless you guys wanna change mine, we would go off limits for here.
Yeah.
So, I think we push it out for another month.
Yeah.
Unless everyone is really upset with how I do it, then I can...
Yeah, I agree.
All right, um, then we'll wait until at least the next meeting for that one, so we can all be here. Next, we have approval of minutes, we have a pile of minutes here to look at. So, I included the public hearing minutes, but those aren't formal minutes, so the board doesn't need to fill out that. Just pass them on so that you guys can put in your two sets, so, the minutes are technically May nineteenth, June thirteenth, and June twenty. All right, so let's see this. I just have these put together.
There was something on the, may, should we start with May ninth?
Let's start with the May ninth.
On the public hearing minutes.
Yeah.
On the paragraph, which, on the first page, the next to the last paragraph.
Yeah.
Starts with Mr. Williams' ask for clarifications, and the last sentence says, Mr. Williams suggested that the western exit be left turn only, to which Ms. Morabito stated that there is no reason to prohibit right-hand turns based on the service levels. And I honestly can't remember what I said, but what I was thinking about is right-hand turns only.
Yeah.
Okay, did I, okay, I mean, did I? It's, it's kind of confusing, I was thinking, well, am I going in or am I leaving, or, you know?
So, right, so you want it to be right instead of left?
So, instead of, that the western exit be right turn only.
And then it should be prohibit left-hand turns?
Yeah, yeah.
So, backwards, okay.
And I, I might have, with my dics, I might have said it wrong, but...
No, I think...
Anyway, that's what I meant.
That's what I remember, but it's...
That's what I meant.
The, um, fourth paragraph down, halfway down the first sentence, after the comma, Carly, so Mr. Diffin identified, after the comma, the review, the proposed expansion, I think it's then.
Then reviewed, yeah.
Um, and then the second page, second to last paragraph, so it says, someone else asked if the project includes any safety measures for pedestrians, should add within the site, because they're gonna be walking within the site, it didn't mean on the road, it was within the parking lot, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And do they have anything else?
I don't.
And you don't need approval on that?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so then the May minutes. I think the second paragraph from the bottom of the first page, Carly, should be minimal tree clearing, not minimum.
Okay.
The, let's see.
Under item two, second heart coming, the third paragraph down starts with Mr. Hebit. Mr. Hebit had not reviewed project dimensions, the road, parking area, etc., and then it was, it's written, Mr. Williams, and I, I was questioning that the turnaround is sufficient. I wasn't, um, saying it was sufficient, so maybe we could say something like, Mr. Williams, question if the turnaround is sufficient.
Asked if the, if the turnaround was sufficient, which the...
Yeah, so, Mr. Williams.
So, ask if...
Question, yeah, very, uh, cross out verify the app, and that the, and then put in question if the, so I just questioned if the turnaround is, is larger than, and maybe I'll move in with, are they gonna build up there, that tower? You know?
It doesn't matter if it's moved or not, it's the legal record of the meeting.
Yeah.
Do you know if they're gonna... Say it again, Jerry.
Do you know if they're gonna build the tower up there, or?
Oh, they're still planning to do it.
Still trying to do it, huh?
Yeah.
Hopefully, they won't, they will come.
Carly, the first paragraph underneath SAG County, um, so like the last sentence, it's a fifty by fifty fence area and, and access road, so take like the out of there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Halfway down on that page two, where it starts, Mr. Williams asked if the antenna... You've got on here the overall width of the base is fifty by fifty. It's really the fence was fifty by fifty, the base is where I think it was the bottom tower.
Okay.
So, I think that should be fence.
Okay.
Sounds like somebody's in the back room pumping water.
Yeah, it says, it says it trickles.
Is that a smokes system or something, uh, that, going like that?
It's like a filter system, and it makes that noise.
Yeah.
The water here is horrible, it's terrible.
And what a place it is.
Yeah, filter system.
Yeah, well, that's, sometimes it's really hard to cure our issues and use all the systems.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute. I forget what I'm talking about.
Sometimes it is hard, yes?
So, the Tuesday, May ninth, planning board meeting, and I'd say, uh, I'd like to make a motion, is anybody ready to run it through?
Not yet, I'm still checking.
Okay.
And I'll do... And I'll see you later, or when you're so in.
Hello? I think I'm good.
Hey, Jen, go for it.
I'm willing to be the captain's correct, and May ninth, Matt, yes.
I second that. Any other discussion? All of them, they were... And yes, for those, that June thirteenth. So, the only thing I wanted to add on this one was the outcome of that meeting with the DOT, and it looks like...
Are we reviewing the public hearing first?
Yeah.
Isn't that what we're looking at?
I'll just ask him, or is that the review first?
Yeah, 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 yep.
Okay, it's two, 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 two thirteen, so it's...
Yeah, public hearing first, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so the third paragraph, I flushed that out a little bit more.
Yeah, it just seemed important to document that it was discussed, it worked out, that there's gonna be done for later when, who knows when? Hopefully, within two years.
Does it make sense to add on that they're also gonna lower the trench or the ditch that goes to the wetlands to the north?
Okay.
What do you guys think?
I do think that's important.
Yeah, because it's gonna matter.
Part of this, it's part of the drainage system as a whole.
Yeah, okay, to relocate the current culvert to its original position, and lower, um, drainage ditch.
You could just say, agree.
Okay.
Whatever you wanna do. You're revisioned.
Lower makes more sense to people who aren't like us.
Sure.
To lower drainage ditch, um, elevation, uh...
Invert elevation?
No, it doesn't have numbers, lower drainage ditch elevation. To facilitate, facilitate flows to wetland to the north. You guys okay with that?
Yep.
The dredging the ditch.
To the north?
The wetland is to the north.
Okay.
To the water.
They're draining the wetland out of the zone, they still started the, correct?
Yes, so, the wetlands on the south, they're gonna lower the culvert, and then they're gonna dig the ditch deeper that relays the water north to the wetlands.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay. Anybody have a motion on, oh, we don't have to, I guess, right? You said, okay, so if we just add... Okay, so if we just add the drainage ditch numbers, that would be great. I think that's gonna help us later. So June thirteenth, four minutes of the regular meeting. John, when they come back with the Yorks, Lisa York, with the modified volumes.
Yes.
From the.
Yes.
Was there much change, there wasn't much change in there?
There wasn't much, no.
Yeah, it just makes sense to, it was smaller, so.
Right.
Just got more, more for later, to expand if they wanted to. Again. Alright, sorry, I'm taking so long. Anyone else need more time with?
This is June thirteenth, the dialogue.
Mm-hmm.
Under the westbound parking lot, see?
Yep.
One, two, three. The fourth paragraph down starts, "Mr. Williams asked."
Yep.
The last sentence, it says mulch and compost will be used in seven areas of the project. It wouldn't be compost, it'd just be mulch.
Good catch. And special mulch.
It's not gonna be grass.
Turns into compost later, you were close, Carly. Anything else?
On the same page two.
Yep.
The fourth paragraph from the bottom. There's this discussion about whether or not it's allowed under ordinance. And I think, like it stated clearly, that I did not feel it was allowed under the ordinance.
You said the fourth paragraph?
Yeah, starts with, "Mr. Williams asked, would you allow use?"
Oh, okay, sorry, I was on the.
If that's, I guess it's the fourth. Maybe it's the one sentence paragraph here. Did you find any approvals back in ninety-seven? For that pack, for that packing, enough of the two hundred and twenty spaces?
Well, I don't know if we asked him to, he wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not sure. Did you?
I'm just curious.
Dig into that?
No, what is it that you want me to look at?
The.
Well, no, Perk of Sticks noted that the original town approval for the two hundred plus space packing law was granted around nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay.
So we're not, you can't discuss it and so forth, but I was just curious as if they did actually have approval for those two hundred and twenty spaces in nineteen ninety-seven.
I'm almost positive they had, they have.
They had something?
Believe I've seen it in there.
That was.
There might be a question that would come up later.
That was when the DEP approved the landfill, so it would also have to come through the planning board, that it was an approved development out there to cap the landfill, the DEP wouldn't approve the landfill. So there has to be, there had to have been something back then, I just don't know if it's in the records.
Now, it might be a question later.
A question?
Yeah, that's on.
Okay, so you want it clear that.
I don't feel that this expansion isn't allowed to use under the ordinance. And I think Cali's already made some notes, so.
So I have, Mr. Williams stated his opinion that the project is not unallowable use. Did you say that in the meeting, though?
Yes.
Okay.
You can check if you want, I'm concerned.
So is that like, okay with you?
Yeah, I guess so.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Jim?
Just give me one second.
Sure, my phone.
On the fourth page. Right about the middle. See, there would be the two, three, four, five, six, seventh paragraph. Which is only two lines, it says, "Mr. Williams confirmed with the applicant." And what that we cross out, "Mr. Williams confirmed with", and it's to say, "The applicant stated that the proposed use will be part of the and it will no longer be used for materials storage."
Well, you asked it, so can I say, "Mr. Williams asked the applicant, who confirmed?"
Just so that, it sounds like I confirmed the use, maybe.
Okay. So the applicant confirmed?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, and I think.
And it's, we don't know what was said there, but somebody reading this might think that I was agreeing with Perk, and I have no.
Okay.
I have no say in it.
And I think too, sometimes that, that happens a lot, when one of us asks a question, then they confirm, and you write, "we confirmed." So maybe it's.
It's just a different way of phrasing, yeah. Like, I'll confirm with you that you're leaving at ten o'clock. It's another way of saying, "I asked you if you're leaving at ten." So I'll try and remember to rephrase that better.
Okay, that would be great, because we asked and they confirmed, I think it'd be better in general. Anything else?
You do a great job of these, Sarah.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, Carly.
It's hard.
I just think that it's.
And I'm sure that paper code is always very clear and distinct, but.
Oh, yeah. Anything else? Till June thirteenth minutes? Alright, a motion, we accept them as revised.
Second.
And we have a further discussion. All of them there. Alright, Carly, John, and Mr. Williams, ready to go? And we've got, June twentieth, that was our special meeting that we had. To talk about the comp plan and to review those sections. Anyone have any comments? Need more time?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good? Alright, motion that they're accepted is presented.
Second.
Seconded, and further discussion. Alright, all of those in favor? Unanimously passed, Carly. Thank you, that was a lot of minutes. Lot of stuff. Alright, so that's the approval of the minutes. I apologize, it should have been other business, it triggered when I was looking at this. We had our comp plan meeting last night. I went, we went through all of the comments that the board had on May two twelve, which there weren't a lot. The next step is they're gonna get revised, and then it's gone out to a bunch of different. I don't know exactly who we're seeing that it's gone out to, to be reviewed by now.
Uh, just staff.
Okay, so it's a staff to be reviewed, and then it will come back, and so I think he was talking another two months probably before it goes to the state. The state takes a couple of months with it to look it over. If there's more changes that need to be made, then we have to make more changes, and it has to go back to the state again, I believe. And then it has to go to Tampa. So it'll be more like the end of fall, I guess, I don't know, I'm trying to do as fast as we can. But our job with it is done. Once we have a final copy, then we'll have to take that and we'll use it when we do our ordinance changes with MAX. Because of all those action items and things that we have to make sure that we are doing, and if we're not doing, we have to incorporate them. So I think as far as our having a look for the comp plan, we're finished. Not the ordinance is so much for the comp plan. So that's my update on the comp plan. Does anyone have anything else? If you'd like to talk about? I had one other thing. What was it, last month, we had the expansion? And I know, John, you unexpectedly couldn't be here. So there were like three different things that we didn't know when she came and asked, that would have been something that you would have known. And we approved it anyway, but I think that it might be a good thing, especially with like the thirty percent expansions, if maybe just write up a little, because I know with the fire department, you might get called off at last minute and not be able to make a meeting. So I think if I'm remembering right, they had demolished an outhouse, and that you had been there and documented it, but we didn't have any proof, and she didn't have any proof. And then there was.
Yes.
Just your eyes on it, that the plans really represented what was physically out there. And then there was a third thing.
I recall one of them was, hadn't been, hadn't been expanded in the past.
Oh, that was it, we didn't know if it had been expanded before.
I can assure you that it wouldn't land here if I had figured that out already. Personally, I don't even think that's a question that you should ask, because I wouldn't allow it to be here if it was. Or I would say, this has already been expanded by X amount, they have this much left, or whatever. I would never leave that a hanging issue.
I understand, we've got a record here, we have to have that on the record, so I think it's a question that we're supposed to ask.
Okay.
I'm not saying that you wouldn't chuck it, I'm saying I think it's a physical question we have to ask and have on the record.
That, and the other thing about that affidavit, I know they got added to that.
Checklist.
They got added to that checklist, and I think it's unnecessary, because I talk about that with them, and then they come in here, and we handle that when they get their building permit.
Right.
They get asked about that in the meeting, I don't necessarily, they don't have it with them, because we don't do it until I get a building permit.
Right, and I think when we made the checklist, didn't we discuss that it was?
We just wanted to make sure that they were aware of that.
I remember that.
I think that was what we were trying to do.
Yeah.
Just so that they're aware that there is something like that out there. And I think that's why we all decided to put it on the checklist. If it's really a problem, I suppose we could take it back off, but.
I don't remember if I thought it was a good idea at the time, but I don't think it is now. Because it's, I'm handling, I get paid every week to do a job, and I'm handling that here. Nobody's gonna get a thirty percent expansion without that affidavit, I can guarantee it, so. I make them aware of that when we're talking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, John, it's not a dig on you, it's.
No, I'm not taking it as a dig, it's just extra, extra discussion, it's not really necessary at the meeting.
We hadn't been doing it too long. And, you know, and I think we were just trying to make sure.
Well, it hasn't been, obviously that application is new, but that has been a question that has been asked of all over the years of doing it.
Yeah.
And sometimes, I mean, the applicant may look, because they don't know the ins and outs, I tell them that. You know, I'll sit down and show you how to do it after you get your approval.
Yeah.
So you want to take it off?
It's not a, it's not a big deal, but.
We can certainly do that. Do you guys, how do you guys feel about taking that affidavit off of the thirty percent, or the non-conforming expansion?
That's what you'd like to see, John, right?
I, I think it just, I think it just, it's, to me, it's an unnecessary question from the board.
And is it add confusion to the?
I think it does.
So let's take it off.
Okay, we can change it.
Now, you can have, we could put something on there. You know, we can, we can switch it out with, "Has this property been expanded before?"
That is in there.
Isn't in there?
Something was. I think there's something somewhere in that.
There is a question that asks if it's been expanded before, yes.
Yeah, okay. Did the last person not have that checked?
So, John, I've had people come in here and they lie. Or they don't know, because they just bought it from someone, and the person that they bought it from told them that it wasn't expanded. But fifteen years ago it was, so that's why there's the look in the folder to see if it has been expanded or not.
Right.
People just don't know sometimes.
I know they either don't know or they lie, and that's why, before I even allow them to come to this meeting, I make sure that it's that it's allowed.
Okay, so would you rather that question not be asked also? I'm not following what you want to do.
Well, I mean, I guess the question is on the application.
It is.
And if they check, you know, if they check, "No, it hasn't been expanded", then that really, that information would be coming from me.
We were kind of thinking that maybe the people would be looking at this application before they even talk to you. And.
Sometimes.
You know, and that would kind of prompt them to say, "Oh, was it expansion before?"
Right, and I get those, I do get those questions.
You know, and, and, well, I'd like to see them put it in writing somewhere what they think has happened on the property before. You know, so if they are trying to deceive us, it's, well, it's wrong.
Well, sometimes it's just they don't know, they've bought it from a realtor, they bought it from the state, and they just don't know, and they're totally.
Then they shouldn't answer it until they've got the job.
I guess, I guess the only thing I'm trying to do is make it so that's not a problem if for some reason I'm not here.
Oh, I see.
Well.
I, I just took it as it was like, well, we don't even know if it, it almost seemed like it was a hangup, but you did it anyway.
Yeah.
You know, you approved it anyway. And I guess what I'm saying is, I just, I don't think it should be a hangup, because I've already been there and done that. And they wouldn't be here if it had already been expanded.
Okay.
Because I've figured that out. So. If that makes you feel any better, but.
I, I, we're not questioning whether you've done your job or not. It's our job to ask and make sure, it's a double check, and it's for the record here, so everything that happens in your office when you're talking to them, there's no record of. There's a record here, there's a video, there's an audio, there's the minutes.
Right.
So it's a record.
So if the box is checked, "No" that it hasn't been, then that would be.
Do you check all of those on the applications?
Yeah, I mean, I go down, I go down with the people.
Right, but do you check their applications to make sure that when they say no, it's really no?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
But.
I guess where's the line of the things that you do that we shouldn't ask them about? I, I don't understand. Is this just so that if you're not here, then everything's covered?
Yeah, I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to get to, so I, I'm just trying to make it easier, so for some reason I'm not here.
The problem is, is that you're our eyes and ears, and we're not supposed to talk to these people, or go to their projects, or sites, or anything.
Right.
We only have here, so you're the only. We only have here, so you're the only information that we have.
Right.
And I understand that at times you have to not be here, which is fine. But for some of that, it might be nice to write down just those few specific things that need to be asked.
So just have like a note for me that says that it's-
Yeah, or, or tell Carly or something, something. It's just, there just were three things that day, I'm trying to remember one of them.
There's a form for the fire chief to sign off, should there be like a form for the code officer to fill out if there are any concerns?
That's not up to us to decide, I'm just like-
No, I'm just asking.
Information, 'cause the likelihood of, likelihood of a fire emergency and him having to go is there. And that's your job and that's fine, it's just, it leaves us with no information and we can't ask anybody anything. And we're not allowed to go out there or to speak to them before they come to talk to us, so. We're stuck with no information. And it would be nice to just have something written down, maybe, really quickly. It doesn't have to be a huge novel, it's just, I checked the site, it matches the plan. They had an outhouse that was removed, I documented it, and what was that third thing? It was something else, I forget what it was, but. That's all.
Yeah?
I don't know, was that?
Yeah, I can make, I mean, I can make notes of that stuff. That's fine, I can just put something on, just right on top of the, the packet.
We went from the affidavit to, to something different, didn't we? Like you wanted to-
What do you mean?
Like, the whole discussion was about the affidavit, right? But now we're talking about-
It started out with, it started out with asking for information just in case he had to be gone for fire or whatever, and I think it turned into the affidavit and then back again.
Gotcha. Well, it is really helpful, you know, you can say, you know, I've looked at this and that.